All right. Okay. Hello, everyone. Welcome to our GNCAM session four with Dr. Taylor. We're so excited for you all to be here and I will go ahead and pass it along so that we can get started.
Fantastic. All right. So we are talking about exam four, which is Saturday, December 12th at 10:00 AM. I will take a quick moment to plug the fact that the final, I know nobody wants to think about that right now, but you you might a minute. That the final than a different color, just the difference. The final is December 13th. So one week later, it's also on a Saturday and it's at 1:00 PM. So the final is one week after exam four. Yeah, I know that's soon. But is that 1:00 PM instead of at 10:00 AM? So the so exam four is at 10:00 like all the other exams. The final is a little bit different. So just keep that in mind, but do add that to your calendars. It is on the syllabus. So anybody who was like, what it is, it is in fact on the syllabus. So you can you can find all that information there as well. So just wanted to put that out there. Quick turnaround because of the quick turnaround. Good news, I hope, or at least news. Exam four is going to be all multiple choice. So is the final. So both exam four and the final are all multiple choice. There is no short answer. Basically, we want to give you guys the exam for grades back before you begin the final. And by now you guys have noticed that we have not pulled that off with short answer in less than a week. So all multiple choice so that we can actually get you guys those grades back. We are aiming. This is a true statement. We haven't decided yet. So say that we're aiming for 32 questions. I'm gonna stay a little bit warmer, but we're aiming for 32 questions on exam four. I don't actually know how many there will be. This is a great question to ask me on Wednesday. Today is Monday, December 1st, Wednesday. I will actually know, but we are for 32 questions. But we are more make. We make decisions about that in the next 24 hours. Feeling excited, but that's what's happening. I did. So one other thing, potentially useful information has been updated. So this is in the 701 section. So I'll pop over to the 701 section. Oops, that's Alex. One moment, please. That's Alex and that's Alex and where is just there's Chrome. So this is the 701 section. So not the individual section, but the 701 section that also has that lovely Alex math background survey. And then midterm exams useful information. That is where the new potentially useful information is located. And that this is the same potentially useful information you'll have on the final as well. Because there aren't any new equations that are going to get added to it. Because there's not that much material between exam four and the final. So but there are new equations that have been added. And I think these atmosphere conversions have been there the whole time. We just haven't really been using them. And here is also this lovely like our value. We are definitely going to use. Also, some folks have asked me if the temperature to the Kelvin to Celsius conversion is on it. And yes, it is. Some of these equations we've never used, but then down here, here's a whole set of new equations that are added for exam four. So down here are the new set. So good news is when we add equations to the potentially useful information, we just add them to the bottom. So you can actually find where all of the new potentially useful information equations are. They're just at the bottom. So those are all the ones that are given and the form that they're given in. So that's what they'll look like. So Dr. Deekman also sent out the announcement that has what we're covering for exam four. And yes, this is for just exam for chapter nine. Chapter 10. And chapter 11. So there are some individual details on exactly what is being covered, what is not being covered. Oh, and this little part of chapter 12. I got what I actually took as a compliment. I hope the person realized I took it as such because somebody actually asked me when we were going to do section 12.5. And I was like, we already did it because it actually fits in really beautifully with chapter 10. So section 12.5 is heating curves. So the one where usually you take like ice and then melt it to water and then we heat the water, something like that. So that's what 12.5 was on. So that that is a lot of stuff. No, no lie. So there's a couple of different things that factor into, gosh, that sounds like a lot of things. One, there are more weeks in between exam three and exam four. So we have actually had more time with y'all to teach you things. So that's definitely a factor. So a lot of the previous exams have had two chapters. This one has three. Most of the other exams have had three weeks in between it. This one has four. So that's a major thing. And then and we can definitely chat more about this depending on what kind of questions y'all ask in the chat. But chapter nine is the chapter of aqueous chemistry. And so when you say, ah, the aqueous chemistry chapter, chapter nine often sounds like it is one cohesive story. But chapter nine doesn't typically sound super cohesive when you start to talk about it. So let me give myself a little bit of space to mention how I think about chapter nine. So chapter nine, big picture, has electrolytes. And then it has acids and bases. And then it has precipitation reactions. And that goes along with things like solubility rules. But not to mention acids and bases had strong acids and strong bases to memorize. So there was stuff to memorize in there. Redux reactions, Redux. Molarity. Dilutions. Which was M1V1 equals M2V2. Titrations. Stoichiometry. With polarity. Net ionic reactions, which really I'll I'll give you net net ionic reactions do go over here with acids and bases. Net ionic equations. Spectator ions. So I mean, that's that's a list right there. And that's one chapter. So chapter 10, at least I feel like tells a bit of a better story. And yes, one of the requests I had gotten was to basically do like a you probably want in more detail, but a general outline of everything that we covered. So this is, this is the quick, this is the very quick outline. Chapter 10 is all thermodynamics. So this one's a little bit harder to outline because I usually think about this as theory. This has things like the, we don't really do the zero with law. So this is the first law of thermodynamics. And then like what is enthalpy? Endothermic and exothermic. State functions. Does anybody teach state functions aside from me? How you know I was not assigned to write chapter 10 questions? I do not have a clue of state functions or something we test on anymore. I still cover them as I think it makes more sense. Is that all the theory stuff? Yeah. And then dealing with, I think this is Delta H or heat of reaction. And reaction stoichiometry. So that's where basically you say, hey, here's an equation. Here's the value of enthalpy that goes with it. If you have, if you combust 12 grams of CH4, tell me how much energy is released, things like that. Then we hit calorimetry. Which that one has basically the constant pressure version. Also known as a coffee cup. And it has a constant pressure version. I just said that constant volume version, that's the other thing, constant volume version. That's the bomb calorimeter bomb can't spell. There we go. And then we hit. And then I hit, let me say it that way. I, once we did this part, after this, I went ahead and did 12.5 in here. Because I think it's fit best here. I don't know where other people stuck it. But I put it here right after we done all the Q equals SM Delta T. Ooh, cough drops. If you can't tell, I actually liked doing exam reviews, but then I talked for almost four hours straight. I was kind of a lot in my voice. Okay, heating curves. What comes next? The three ways. You calculate enthalpy of a reaction. Which means Hess's law. That means enthalpies of formation. And bond entalpies. And for each one of these. I think of these each as having the like calculation, the like, how do you do a problem if it says, hey, here is some data, do it. And then essentially the theory of why this works. So usually there is some language associated with exactly what this thing is and why it works and how that goes into it and potentially how they relate to each other. By the way, the stuff in blue is part of the reason why I usually don't do this. But I know that coming back from fall break, this is helpful for most people. But oftentimes when I'm trying to make these lists, personally, I struggle both with remembering to tell you, hey, just being able to do the calculation will get you through most everything. But one of the questions I got asked from my class was like, what do we need? What are the main things we need to know to get an A? And I respect the question. But the truth is, is that a lot of times the difference between the As and Bs students are the B students can do every single calculation, boom. But the little pieces are sometimes going to be those conceptual things where either it's trapped in a conceptual question. Or there was another piece of information that goes along with it. So sometimes those details are things that either in an outline format, sometimes I forget to mention, or I also struggle with infant with how to emphasize these. Because at least here I've got the calculation listed first. Because we're going to ask you a calculation like out of the three like Hess's law and the piece of formation bond entalpies. Going to ask you a minimum, minimum of two calculations out of those three topics, probably three, maybe actually even four. Don't know. Back to the, I don't actually know how many questions are on the exam right now. So you definitely need to know the calculations for those. The theory of why it works might be on the exam. It might not be on the exam and I don't know yet. Because we only got space for so many theory questions. So it tips. So but it is something that you should also that you are responsible for. That's fair game. Deep breath, all but slower. Gases. So we've, so I've done a quick outline format of chapter nine. Gosh, I hope that is helpful. A quick outline version of chapter 10. And I'm going to cheat a little bit and pull up my own notes because I revamped all of my notes and I really like my new revamped notes. Shocker. I took time to organize something and I liked my new organization because I took a deep breath and actually thought about this. So I did chapter 11 in three pieces for the most part. I need to add one thing in here. Properties of gases, kinetic molecular theory, diffusion, effusion for theory. Stuff with the equation, pressure, volume relationships, volume, temperature relationships, really any combination, moler mass. I need to add a letter E, which is density. Is the thing I need to add. And then extensions, I also need to add an extension because partial pressure is one of them. Real gases is another one. The one I actually wish I had listed first. But since I didn't, I'll put it here is stoichiometry. Dealing with gases. But otherwise, that's that's it. I think that's stoichiometry could fit in PV equals NRT. Yay. So it, it is a, it is a significant amount of material. Don't get me wrong. And the other thing that is happening, just just so you're aware is that it is the end of the semester and a lot of your other courses also have deadlines, also have exams. So there's just a lot going on at this point. So as you are working on various things, just do your best, take a deep breath. And know that it's going to be okay. But if it feels like a lot, it is a lot. So from the questions that my students already brought. Also waiting for you all to put stuff in the chat. I'll ask for that in just a minute. A quick overview bullet points, all the topics. I tried that. And what chapter should be reviewed from old tests? Old stuff that is likely to come forward. Old stuff that's likely to come forward. Nomenclature. Grams to moles conversions. We should do that with a different arrow. Grams to moles conversions. I had a third one. Oh. Which homo nuclear diatomics, homo nuclear diatomics. That is, I still have memorized Brinkley Hoff. You don't have to have this one memory, but you have to somehow know which elements are diatomic. This is something that actually comes up in a couple of different ways. But definitely something you're responsible for. Stoichiometry. That's working with reactions. I'm going to put this with a really big question mark, but I'm going to go ahead and write it down, limiting reactant. With a question mark. It's fair game. That you would either be given information about a reactant and told the other one is in excess, which is conceptually the idea of limiting reactant. It's also possible for us to give you information about two reactants. And you would actually need to go ahead and solve for limiting reactant. So it is fair game. I'm going to leave the question mark on there because I believe the question mark on there. That's what I can think of off the top of my head. Because I think that's going to do it. Yeah, I think that'll do it. It can real hard. Okay. Fire information. I think we did that. We'll talk about memorization. Does it relate to previous chapters? We'll try to talk about that as we go along. I talked about why this exam feels hard. I tried to. Okay, I think the rest of these are either more specific topics or things we need to look at a couple of different things for. So since I'm now going to be moving out of general, unless there's questions in the chat that us for general things. I think I'm now about ready to move into more specific topics. So first of all, are there questions from the chat so far to address?
I don't see any questions yet.
No worries. I will definitely call for those again. So one of the questions is either, so there's a variety of questions that asked about either what to memorize. Gosh, there's a lot of equations. How do I know which ones to use? So a couple of things with the equations that I want to point out. And granted, I know we've got some of them in here. But when we're thinking through these chapters, for the most part, chapter nine deals in molarity. So while sure, you can also have grams of things and be given volumes of things. Chapter nine is aqueous chemistry. So chapter nine is all about things being aqueous. So as far as calculations go, chapter nine stuff is going to be in molarity. So if you see either things in molarity, or if you see brackets, which is also molarity, these are ways to kind of think through chapter nine stuff. So here's those big capital Ms. And here's the brackets, all to be about molarity. So something you can kind of look for units as you think through this. When you think about chapter 10, chapter 10 is a lot of energy. So chapter 10 often has kilojoules or joules, maybe calories. But when you're looking for, especially again at the calculations for which equation do I need and what's going on? If you're thinking about energy units, joules, kilojoules, things like that. Then you're hanging out in the chapter 10 stuff. So kind of keeping an eye on your units to think about what do I need, what's going on, where are things that are familiar or unfamiliar? And then last, chapter 11. This is gases. So the tricky part with gases is so gases a lot of times involve this equation PV equals NRT. So granted, some of these things repeat because T is temperature in Kelvin. And that does show up in more than one place. And N is the number of moles. And that shows up in more than one place. And V is volume. And that can show up in the chapter nine stuff because it's got volume, but pressure, pressure is unique. Pressure is only in chapter 11. So when you are looking at a question, if you see something that is definitely a unit of pressure, that has to be a chapter 11 question. And oftentimes, chapter 11, the question will say something about a gas. It'll either tell you that a gas is released or it'll give you a balloon is being blown up. But it will, or it will give you information about a gas. So you can actually look for certain key words to help you with what's going on. And again, there are all of these units of pressure. So while some of them may be more familiar to you than others, we will use these styles of shorthand to help you out with the fact that these are, these are pressure units. So kind of identifying what's going on, what do things look like? And matching some of those units to the equations will definitely help out. So what I'm going to go ahead and do next is one of the things that we did last before fall break. So I definitely got requests for more Hess's law. And then I prepped an entalpies of formation question and I prepped. Actually, let me just talk about these three real quick. So I need to fix my table. Something is wrong with my table. Great. Okay, so I've got three different questions. But they all say, find the entropy of the reaction four. And then there's an equation. And that is what each one of these says. And each one of these has the exact same chemical reaction. But what I want you to notice before we actually put pen to paper, which is the next step, we're going to work a question real soon. But the thing to notice is actually what you're given. Because what you're given is going to determine what you do. So in one of these, I have a bunch of reactions. In one of these, I have a bunch of compounds. And in one of these, I have a bunch of like H to O and C to H and O double bonded to O. And a carbon double bonded to an oxygen. So when I'm looking at all of these, keep in mind that the data that you're given actually tells you how you're going to solve the problem. So these are bonds. So this is using bond entalpies. So we're going to use the bond entalpique technique to do this question. The bond entalpique technique, I should say, it's only one of them. Then up here, these are compounds. And I have this with little F right there. So didn't want to cop right over. But that F is for formation. So this is going to be using heats of formation. So this is the sum of all of the products minus the sum of all of the reactants. Hopefully y'all cannot hear my dog fussing at me. But if you can hear background noise, it's, it's the dog. So but that little F right there, or the fact that you have a table of compounds means that this is using heats of formation, which is products minus reactants. And then this last one, there's whole reactions here. Since there are whole reactions, this is Hess's law. So essentially, based on the information that's given, that's going to determine how you solve the problem. And we will give you those things in the question itself. So you're not going to have to like go to a table and try to figure it out. You're just going to use the information in the question that's given. So that being said, one of the requests I had was specifically for Hess's law. So Hess's law, I will definitely do. The other ones we'll do if we've got time and if you guys want to, otherwise there's just more examples. Make it a little bit bigger. Cool. Okay, so in Hess's law, this is the part where we're using that idea that it doesn't matter what steps I take to get somewhere. So this has like a whole bunch of reactants and a whole bunch of products. And it just shows an arrow that we just go from one to the other. But I could talk about this going stepwise. And I could then, as long as I add up all the steps, I just care about the beginning and the end for my state functions. So as long as I have a way to get to the beginning and the end, I can go ahead and compare these. So basically what I'm going to do is I'm going to add up all of my steps for my, to get to my overall reaction. So my goal is to basically make these three look like to add, subtract, whatever I need to do, these three here to look like the given reaction. Because I want to have a Delta H of reaction for this whole thing. So I'm just going to start to and go from left to right. One of the strategies I will tell you is if in general, I try to go from left to right. The other thing is, is that is there anything that happens a lot? This oxygen and there's oxygen in two places. So probably try to do the So probably try to do the oxygen last, and just kind of hope that one all works out. Similarly, I've got carbons in two places, but there's no carbons in the overall reactions. I'm just going to hope that those also cancel out the way I need to. So as much as you can, you're going to focus on, um. Compounds, species, species is the better term. Focus. On chemical species. Let's face it, chemicals. That only occur once. Only occur one time, once. So here's my C2H6. And here's my C2H6, and that's the only place it happens. So when I'm looking there, I have two different problems. Um, my C2H6, which is where I'm going to start, is a reactant. In the problem, but it's a product in what's given to me. So I'm going to need to do two different things. And there's two of them instead of just one of them. So one thing I need to do is reverse the reaction. So I can go ahead and do that, C2H6. So guess, does anything actually change states of matter? No, okay, great. So what I'm looking at is I'm looking at the fact that everything changed, everything like the carbon is a solid, is always a carbon is a solid. The hydrogen gas is always hydrogen gas. So if I drop my state symbols, everything's the same state symbol. So since I changed direction, so I've got my C2H6 now on the reactant side. I have to flip this sign. So this now becomes positive. Eighty-four points here, all these are all supposed to be in kilojoules per mole. I knew I forgot something. So these are, this is my, my kilojoules, my values of delta H in kilojoules per mole. But the other thing again is, is that we don't have the right stoichiometry. I definitely know I need two of those. So I'm also going to go ahead and just multiply everything by two. And when I do that, I am going to keep that eighty-four along for the ride. So this then becomes two C2H6 going to four carbons plus six H2. And then that is now positive a hundred and. I did do this problem in advance, but I didn't save all my work, positive one sixty-eight. So I definitely need this. Reaction. Then after that, I mentioned we're going to skip the oxygens for now. So I'm going to go to the, my next one, which is carbon dioxide, that's in the products. Here it is in the products. So all I need to do here is multiply by four. And again, I'm going to multiply everything by four, absolutely everything by four. So that way I'm going to have four carbons. And up sees also oxygens also on the reactant side. I'm not done with my reactants. Plus four oxygens going to four carbon dioxides. And that is in four times negative three ninety-three point five, which is negative one thousand five hundred seventy-four. This is the part where some people will go ahead and add these two together. I'm actually going to go ahead and just keep going because I haven't addressed everything in my original equation yet. So I'm going to go ahead and address the water. So there is water, and here's water, and it says I need six of them. So I am going to multiply everything by six. So that is six times my hydrogen. And six times one half is three. And then I have six waters. And then I have six times two eighty-five point eight negative. Sign stays the same because the reaction stayed the same. Now I can go ahead and add all of these together. This is also the part now where I do try to line up all of my arrows. I didn't do a great job. But here's all of my arrows. The reason why I like to line these up is because it tells me what's on the reactant side and what's on the product side. So if I can have a clear. Separation here, what I should be able to do is find things like here are my four carbons. And here are my four carbons on opposite sides of the reaction arrow. So I can go ahead and just ignore those. I can essentially cross those out and say I've got four on the reactive side. I have four carbons on the product side, so those just cancel out. Similarly, we can then also walk through other things. So what else does this, my six hydrogens here? And my six hydrogens here, same idea, I'm on opposite sides with the reaction arrow. So those six on the product side are going to react, are going to cancel out with the six on the reactive side. Um. The C2H6 is nowhere over here, the carbon dioxide is nowhere over here. The water is nowhere over here. And the benefit of highlighting my reaction arrows, I do see oxygen in two places. But they're both on the reactant side, which means even though I have two sets of oxygens. They're on the same side, I'm just going to add them together. So we're going to go ahead and add everything. So I have. Say color code, so I've got the two C2H6. And then I do need to add four oxygens plus three oxygens, which is seven oh two. That number six is bothering me. Be small, there you go, be a subscript. And then four carbon dioxides. And six waters. Since I added all of those together, I also add up this other column together. So the negative. So the positive one sixty-eight. Then we're adding the negative fifteen seventy-four. And then adding the negative seventeen fourteen. Gets us a negative three thousand one hundred twenty point eight. And that is still in kilojoules per mole. You do also want to double check that this reaction down here that we got is also the same as what we were looking for way here at the top. So I do have two C2H6, and here's two C2H6. And seven oh twos, and seven oh twos, and four CO2s. Four CO2s and six H2O's, they're there, six H2Os. So again, everything does match. And so this is a lot of equation manipulation to make sure that everything goes together. But that's, that's how that one's done. So a lot of mixing different equations together. But all things allowable to do as far as manipulating thermochemical reactions, it's just keeping the value of delta H along for the ride. So whatever multiplication you did, you also do to that value of delta H. And if you have to swap products and reactants, then you just swap the sign for that value of entropy. So. Since I finished and question, let's go ahead and see if there's questions in the chat and see how we're doing. So any questions in the chat so far?
Yes, there is one question, and it says you mentioned pressure is only in chapter 11, but the formula is also in chapter, chapter nine. Is it ignored there?
So the question is that the pressure formula is in. Chapter nine. Why? Is there a pressure formula? In chapter nine, is it the death, oh, um. Chapter nine. No, it's not vapor pressure. Where? I don't know, um. I only have. An ebook, so I'm going to search real quick for. The, for the word pressure, I guess, and see if I can find what we're talking about. Because I am very confused. So. Chemical reactions and aqueous solutions, there. There you go, pressure. Constant volume and constant pressure. Um. Okay, I, I do not, so. I respect the fact that you have a question about pressure as applied to chapter nine according to the textbook. I know that my screen is probably too small, but I honestly do not know in what way. The textbook addresses pressure in chapter nine. Because I did a quick search for the word pressure. And there is no option for that in chapter nine in the quick search I looked in. So granted, in thirty seconds, I'm not confident that I actually have looked and seen the same thing that you're seeing. But it does mean I, I don't know how to answer your question because I have no idea. So I, I don't think pressure applies in chapter nine. And I would adore to answer your question, but I have, I have no idea how to do that. So I'm gonna, so if you, if you can give me more information, I'm happy to answer that. But otherwise. Chapter nine is all about things in solution. And we don't talk about gases. In aqueous solutions, so solutions can be gases. But chapter nine is all about aqueous chemistry, which means chapter nine is all about things in water, specifically water. And we don't talk about gases dissolved in water until gen chem two. So there shouldn't be pressure. In the water chapter. Said that was only one question, so that's, that's the one. So I'm back to whatever I got, so. So I did Hess's law question. Then I've got strong electrolytes, weak electrolytes. So here's the deal. So we talk about strong electrolytes and weak electrolytes back in chapter nine. So, strong electrolytes, if you are looking for a strong electrolyte, you are looking for either. A strong acid. A strong base. Or a soluble compound. Which yes, does mean solubility rules. Bloody rules. So strong acid, strong base, soluble compound, solubility rules. Those are the thing, the three things that will get you a strong electrolyte. Those, those are it. So the strong acids, you have seven of them, you have to memorize them, the strong bases, there are eight of them, you have to memorize them. There are solubility rules, you have to memorize them. I can go ahead and pull those up on the screen as well. Here we go. Where are my? Strong acids. There's some strong acids, there we go. And I'll just put the strong bases somewhere. So the strong, strong acids that you're responsible for, HCl, HBr, HI, HNO3. Chloric acids, so we should HCl. HBr, HI, these are the strong acids. And then HNO3, HCl03. HCl04 and H2SO4. So those are your seven strong acids to memorize. So any of those are strong electrolytes. Then there are the strong bases. I actually do like a periodic table. This might be the longest I've gone in an exam review without a periodic table popping up, but hey, it was high time for this. So hanging out over on the left-hand side of your periodic table. Are your strong bases essentially lithium hydroxide, sodium hydroxide, potassium hydroxide, rubidium hydroxide. What is ccm hydroxide? Yeah, ccm hydroxide. Calcium hydroxide, strontium hydroxide, barium hydroxide. I had that moment where I was like, is this one? Because cesium is a bit. It's a bit extreme, but that's okay. It does act like a strong base, it's not like it doesn't. So rubidium hydroxide, cesium hydroxide. And then calcium hydroxide, because it's a basic base. Barium, I should do them in order, strontium hydroxide. And barium hydroxide. Ta-da. So those are your eight strong bases, those are all strong electrolytes. And then your solubility rules. I will go ahead and copy those over, I'm not going to read those all out to you. Because. These are tables that are pretty big, and these are also things to memorize. Which I know is annoying, but that is, that is what we're doing. You're going to memorize the solubility rules. Because that's the way, that's the way to know. So as far as strong electrolytes go. You do have basically a list of things to memorize to know if something is a strong electrolyte or not. Um. So those are your solubility rules. That's the other way you would know if something was a strong electrolyte is if it's a soluble compound. Weak electrolytes are a little bit. More nuanced in some ways. As far as the list, the outline version, not so much. Weak electrolytes. These are weak acids. And weak bases. And that's all. So granted, you do have to be able to recognize weak acids and weak bases. The first way you're going to do that is by knowing what is strong, because especially for weak acids. We have a tendency to throw you guys things that look kind of like strong acids, but are not. So HF, not a strong acid, it's a weak acid. H2CO3, that's carbonic acid, not a strong acid, it's a weak acid. So it tends to do things like that to y'all, which are things that look kind of like strong acids, but they're not strong acids, they're weak acids. For weak bases, there's two main things we do, we do things like ammonia, it is a weak base. And then we'll also do things that have negative signs. So things like just carbonate, because carbonate does have that in common with carbonic acid. The weak acid that's listed above it, but it's just got this little. It doesn't have any protons. So that CO3 negative two can go ahead and accept a proton. It's negative, it very easily can go ahead and accept a proton, which makes it a weak base. That's good. So that's one of the difficult things with electrolytes is on one hand. They are basically a way to kind of summarize some of the other parts of chapter nine. But you basically do have to have a number of things memorized in order for it to be recognizable. To, since I've talked a lot about memorization, I'll go ahead and mention the solubility rules real quick. I do recommend that you start with the things that have no exceptions. So there's two lines up here that don't have any exceptions, which means these, if they have these, they're always soluble. So. So these are actually the things I would recommend that you work on learning first. So these are just, what did I want to say? Always soluble, that's what I want to say. So these things are always soluble. So in terms of the strong electrolytes, those are always strong electrolytes. And do use a periodic table when you're doing this, because a number of these things are from the periodic table and are organized with the periodic table in mind. So that'll also help you in a number of cases. Okay. That was strong electrolytes, weak electrolytes. An enthalpies of formation be used to determine steps in a complex reaction? So I think the enthalpies of formation question came from the fact that when you look at an entropy of formation, so entropy of formation. This is usually a standard entropy of formation, I should put that standard. So by definition, this makes one mole of product. So I think the reason that this question is being asked is when you look at an entalpy of formation reaction, the one we usually talk about is making ammonia, just because it gets you some really funky stuff. When you look at making ammonia, it makes one mole of product. So the heat of formation reaction or ammonia has to make one mole of ammonia from elements in their standard states. So this is the part where that Brinkley Hoff comes in, because you need to know that nitrogen is in two and hydrogen is H2. So elements in standard states. And then you have to balance it, but the balancing, you have to keep in mind this one mole of products. So this has to have that invisible one, no matter what. So that means for my weird hydrogen, this is going to be three over two. Nope, wait, yes, yes. Sorry, the fractions also bother me. And only one half of this nitrogen in order to make the math work. So one of the weird things with heats of formation reactions is they just look weird in a large part because of the fractions that you often wind up with. But the question then is like, well, this reaction is relatively straightforward and looks fine. And then we use these usually to do products minus reactants. So can you do it for a larger reaction? And yes. So essentially, whenever we're doing questions in class, we're usually trying to do things in a straightforward way, so we can demonstrate the concept. Because the more complicated the reaction, especially when you've just been taught a topic, it can be harder to follow. But this one, I hope that this is looks more complicated. Because since enthalpies of formation was the question, we'll just go ahead and do this one to do an example, because I did go ahead and do a demonstration of what the reaction looks like. So we can also go ahead and do a calculation example in here. So I did forget to label my table. So that should be labeled for you. But now is the part where what I need to do is I need to do products minus reactants. So what I need to do here is I have six waters. So I need to have six times the delta H of formation reaction for the water. And I do need to make sure here that my state symbols match. So I have a liquid here, so I need the liquid here, so I need this version. That gaseous one is in there just to throw me off. At 285.8. So there's one of my products plus four times my carbon dioxide. Negative 393.5. Those are all of my products. And then minus my reactants. I have oxygen and there is no oxygen. So I'm going to go ahead and tell you therefore O2 equals zero. Now, the reason why O2 actually equals zero, because this is also important to know, good to know. Here's the thing, we talked about formation reactions being element, being something formed by elements in their standard states. If I wanted to do a formation reaction for oxygen, this would be forming O2 gas from O2 gas for my delta H of formation. The thing is, is that this triangle here means change. But there is no change. Right? The product is the same as the reactant, noth- nothing happened. So there, there's no change to report. Nothing happened. So on exams, we actually just don't give you elements in their standard states, because we expect you to know that they are zero and why they are zero. Your textbook and Alex, because of the way their tables are formatted, just go ahead and give you the fact that there is zero. So hopefully, in some of your practice, you've been seeing and noticing that some of those values are in fact zero. You've learned enough to know like, ah, some elements happen to be well, elements, any elements in their standard state are zero. But that means that sometimes I should expect it to be zero. And on exams, we simply will not give you that value in the table. So looking for oxygen, just zero, I can do seven times zero to show off the fact that there's seven. And then the C2H6 is less. A squiggly line, squiggly line, negative two times negative eighty-four. Google line. So now I have this math to do. And by the time I get everything all said and done, this is going to be equal to negative 3,120.8 kilojoules per mole. So you can use heats of formation reaction to do complicated reactions. You could also use them to do relatively straightforward ones. The other thing to keep in mind, your delta H of formation that we just did and your Hess's law should give you the same value. So I did, in this case, the Hess's law question that we did was actually nothing but heats of formation reactions. So this is one of my tricks when I have to make a Hess's law problem. All of these form one mole of the product from elements in their standard state. But it's all one mole of the product. So the Hess's law question we just did, we did at the beginning is actually using heats of formation. So I was being efficient in my prep time. All right. So we've talked a little bit about strong and weak electrolytes. We talked about some of the stuff to memorize. We've talked about Hess's law, and we've talked about delta H of formation reactions. Are there any other questions out of the chat right now?
Yes, three questions.
Okay.
First one is, could you go over one constant pressure and one bomb calorimeter question? And then the second one is, could you go over molecular ionic and net ionic equations? And then the third one is, do we need to memorize the names of gas laws? How are all the gas laws all derived from the ideal gas equation? And do we need to memorize the relationship between each variable in each gas law?
Okay. So okay, no problem. Okay. So first of all, do we need to memorize the names of the gas laws? So what this person is talking about is they're talking about things like there's a Boyle's law, there's a Charles law, there's a Alagadro's law. I think I left this in my notes, but I'm not entirely sure. But you do not need the names. Names not needed. Now, here's the reason why I was kind of like smiling a little bit. Let me go ahead and talk about the relationship between the gas laws. I understand. So this, this is what's given on the potentially useful information page. Scroll back up. I'm not lying. It is right here, PV equals NRT. This is what's given. This is the only gas equation given. This is what's given. I don't think you have to memorize any of the relationships because you have them all. They're all right here. I don't think you have to memorize any of them because they're given to you. I understand you might not agree with me on that. Let me show you what I mean. So here's this lovely gas law. This R is the gas constant. It's a constant. It's the same no matter what. It doesn't change. So the thing is, I can rearrange this to look like this. Which means I could actually go ahead and say, you know what? Each one of these is actually a one and is an original state. And I could have basically any combination of other weird things happen in state two. So this means that I could have a pressure, an original pressure of like point eight atmospheres and the volume of the container be something and number of moles and the temperature, and then I could change all four of those variables. Except for one, ask you to solve for the last one, because these things are related to each other. But the thing is, is that while you don't have to know the names of these individual laws, historically, the relationships between different things, pressure and volume, volume and temperature, volume and moles were thought about and calculated separately individually, which is why there's names for the individual laws. But the thing is, they're actually right here. Because if you want to talk about pressure and volume, then that means that we're going to keep mold and temperature constant. So I can just assume that they're the same. So they'll basically just divide out. So these just don't exist right now. And all I have is P1V1 equals P2V2. They're being multiplied by each other. This means that they are inversely related. So as pressure goes up, volume goes down. That's why you get to multiply them together. Because they're inversely related. So I don't have that memorized. I have the ideal gas equation and I can derive that relationship. So perhaps I should say better, I don't have to memorize the relationship between pressure and volume, because I can derive it relatively quickly from the ideal gas equation. So I don't think that I have to memorize that. This is part of the reason, by the way, why when people want me to make them a list of everything they have to memorize, I usually just say no, because we don't agree on what to memorize and what not to memorize. But I'm going to go ahead and show you the rest of them, because they're all in here. P1V1N1T1 equals P2V2N2T2. If I want volume and temperature, so pressure and volume is Boyle's law, I think. Which means volume and temperature is Charles law? Yes, this is the hot air balloon law. You see how confident I am about it being the hot air balloon law and how confident I am not about this being somebody's name. Pressure and moles constant. So this is get to ignore pressure and moles, excuse me, V1 over T1 equals V2 over T2. This is directly proportional, because they are divided by each other. So as the volume so it really, it's this temperature goes up, because one of these is more causal than the other. Actually, no, it doesn't matter. We're going to, we're going to do it this way, because this is, so it makes more sense. As temperature goes up, volume goes up. That's the hot air balloon part, by the way. You get usually less dense, less dense gas, so the balloon rises, but your volume also goes up and part of that is all with heat. So these are directly related to each other. As your temperature goes up, your volume goes up. Pressure, temperature goes down, volume goes down. And the last one, so PV over in T1111. P2V2 divided by N2T2. Last one I need is volume. And in, this is technically Alagadro's law. I think about this as blowing up a balloon, because we are going to add moles and that is going to increase the volume. So as you add moles of gas, the volume goes up. So I don't actually have any latex balloons in my immediate vicinity, because I'm at home instead of in my office. Do actually have them in my office within arm's reach. But as you add moles of gas, the volume increases, just like it blowing up a balloon. So that these are also directly proportional. So again, I definitely understand can I spell proportional, maybe? So I definitely understand for some folks that they would rather memorize. But frankly, that's not how I usually do it. So I have problems remembering that people memorize those because they're, they're in the given equation. They are in the given equation. So that's, that's why I don't know how to answer that question. That happens to me sometimes. I understand the question, but I'm not sure how to answer it. So I think I've answered both of the gas questions. Okay, let's do a constant pressure. Yay. So let's, I am going to work backwards, though. Let's go and do molecular and net equations. Since I was more recently talking about solubility, and let's do, do I do solubility? Do I want to do? Let's do the one that makes everybody mad. Let's do the one that makes everybody mad. I already claimed that do I want that one? Stop. Just mentally pick one. H2CO3 plus will make the sodium hydroxide. I will have to balance this in just a moment. It's going to make water and sodium carbonate. That means I need two of those. I'm going to have two of those. Yes, balanced, very good. So the goal is to now write out an ionic equation, which we can absolutely do. The purpose of an ionic The purpose of an ionic equation is to write as ions any strong electrolytes. This is a weak acid. So when I go to write my ionic equation, my weak acid stays all together. Cause it is not a strong electrolyte. Now sodium hydroxide is a strong electrolyte. Uh, it's a strong base, so that gets written out. Um, then the water does stay all together. I have written no state symbols. Um, and then sodium carbonate is soluble. Sodium is on the always aqueous, always soluble side. Um, so that does in fact get written as, um, individual ions. I should have put state symbols in everywhere. Um, this is aqueous. This is aqueous. This is a liquid. This is aqueous. So my weak acid is aqueous. My sodium is aqueous. My hydroxide is aqueous. My water is a liquid. My s- uh, sodium is aqueous. My carbonate is aqueous. As I then am coming back for my net ionic equation. I think, um, as I'm coming back now for my net ionic equation. Um, I'm going to go ahead and remove spectator ions. So this does also mean you'd be able to identify spectator ions. Spectator ions occur the same on both sides. Um, so here is sodium and there is sodium. Um, so those are spectators. So found some, yay. Um, so we're going to remove the sodium because that's a spectator ion. Now, the thing that happens next is people usually look pretty hard for more. Um, but the thing is, is is that if I'm looking for more water, there is no water over on the left hand side. The reactant side doesn't have any water anywhere. So that's unique. It only happens in one place. The hydroxide isn't anywhere else. That that is not a spectator ion. Um, so I can't, I can't use that and I can't use the water. Um, I could look at the carbonate. Um, but that's, doesn't show up anywhere exactly the same way. Um, and my weak acids is also not anywhere else in exactly the same way. So anytime you especially have weak acids or weak basis, but predominantly you're going to see this with weak acids, your net ionic reaction has more things in it than you probably would have thought there would be. Because you're representing that weak acid as something that stays all together. You're representing that weak acid as something that for the most part does not ionize by itself. Now it's reacting, um, in this equation. But because of the rules for net ionic reactions, we demonstrate it as being all together. So your weak acid does show up in your net ionic equation in the end. This usually makes people unhappy. Which is why I did it as an example. Um, lots of other examples are faster. Um, so yeah, so weak acids are in your net ionic reaction. And so keeping track of which ones are weak acids becomes really important for all of us. Okay. Um, so the example, so I'll do one more example of, um, net ionic reactions. Um, I will not be mean and write this all out in words. Um, but let's go ahead and do, um, rubidium hydroxide, which is aqueous and, um, iron three nitrate. And that's also aqueous. And then because we need to write new products, so I could say, what are the products? Keep in mind when we're doing this that we need to have, here's my rubidium and I can grab my periodic table. But I should also have my polyatomic ions memorized. Oh no, I said nomenclature, but I didn't remember the polyatomic ions, so I said nomenclature. Nomenclature. These are things to remember from what previous things. Nomenclature and polyatomic ions. You know, I was going to forget something. Nomenclature and polyatomic ions. I usually roll those two things together, so I don't feel too bad, but oops. Um, so you can either know that rubidium has a positive charge from the periodic table that I also scrolled through at one point. Oh no, where did it go? Hmm, there it is. Um, just didn't know. Yes. Um, so rubidium is hanging out in group one A. So here's rubidium, group one A, so it should have a positive one charge. Uh, but I could also know that from knowing that hydroxide has a negative one charge. And there's a one to one ratio here. Um, that is the only way to figure out what the charges on the iron um, is to know that nitrate has a negative one charge. And there's three of them. So that is why the iron has a positive three charge is to balance out the three negative one nitrates. So now I have all of my ions written out. Um, so originally the rubidium and the hydroxide were together. So I'm going to swap and give the positive rubidium a different negative anion. And I'm also going to give the positive iron a different negative anion. So now when I go to rewrite these, I have iron within hydroxides. And I have rubidium and nitrate. Um, together. And they're also, and they're, they're in a one to one ratio because they're one each. So now I have to figure out what my state symbols are. So rubidium is in that always soluble category, which you are going to have memorized because rubidium is a alkaline metal and all of the alkaline metals are always soluble. So this gets an aqueous symbol, which probably means that this is the solid. Um, but hydroxide basically, so, and it does. Uh, but hydroxide, what's happening here is the only soluble hydroxides are the strong bases. So when you take a look at your solubility rules, um, this second table is insoluble compounds. The soluble exceptions are the things we said were always soluble. But for hydroxide, the soluble exceptions are all of the strong bases. Those are the exceptions. So we just assume that all the strong bases are always soluble. Those are the only hydroxides that are always soluble. That's how we get that. Okay. So now that I have this, I'm going to give myself a little more space. So that was on writing and predicting products. Uh, but now I'll go ahead and do the whole net ionic reaction thing. Um, so same game as before where everything that is a, um, oh, I should balance it. I should, I should do that. Um, three nitrates here, three nitrates there. Um, so a three in front of the rubidium. There we go. Much better. Um, anything that is a strong electrolyte should be written out. Um, so three RB plus. I'm going to not write the off state symbols so I can hopefully get this on one line. Um, F E three plus, plus three nitrates goes to. This gets written all together. So notice that my precipitate, my insoluble thing essentially counts as a, um, non-electrolyte. Uh, I am basically saying that, hey, this thing is not soluble. So therefore, when I write it out, I, um, keep it all together. So that stays all together. Now I need to find my spectator ions. I have three rubidiums here. I have three rubidiums here and I have three nitrates here and I have three nitrates here. So I can get rid of my spectator ions. And then I just have three hydroxides. Now I have a little more space. I'll put my aqueous symbols back in. Um, and one iron and that makes the F E O H three by precipitate. So that is the, the top one is the molecular. The middle one is the ionic. And this bottom one down here is the net ionic net. Eraser. Is the net ionic reaction. Okay. No, I have not answered the calorimetry questions yet. So I've not forgotten, but since I've talked a little bit about gases and I've talked a little bit about um, precipitation and a little bit about acids and bases. Let me go ahead and take questions from the chat and see if there's any other questions to add to the list.
No new questions so far.
Okay, cool. Okay, so I did molecular net ionic. Um, okay, constant pressure, bomb time, but, 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 um, okay. Think about this. Um, I won't tell you which one it is. I'll just start writing a question. That's a good idea. Um, oh, is it already, hmm? I'll do that. Um, I don't know if it's still be correct or not, it's okay. Um, we'll just do C H. I'll make this bigger in just a minute. Um, we're going to make up some numbers here, so this may or may not be super accurate, but it's okay. Um, I don't, well. That seems like a lot. Um, I don't know that I like this question. Uh, hold on. Okay. That's also too big. Um, we'll go ahead and do this one. It has enough information. And that's what I was looking for. I might not be pleased with the numbers, but it has enough information to solve. Um, so this says five grams of CH four is combusted in a bomb calorimeter. The calorimeter absorbed 598 joules of energy from the reaction. If the heat capacity of the calorimeter is 29 kilojoules per Kelvin, how much should the temperature rise? So, um, this is a bomb calorimeter equation, the bomb calorimeter question. Um, you do know, because it does say bomb calorimeter. Um, you also have some information, like you have the heat capacity itself. Um, if you saw my face frowning for a moment, it was because I wanted to make sure I got the units right on this. Um, so you do have a lot of numbers in here, but then when we were looking at, well, what do I need to use? I am not going to go all the way back. Cause at some point, the scrolling hurts my eyes. But I will take a little screenshot. And then make it bigger. That's awfully grainy, but that's okay. Come here. So these are the equations given. Um, so this has information like, um, absorbed, um, absorbed 598 joules of energy. Um, so this is going to be our value of Q. Um, because Q is heat. Um, so Q is going to be our amount of energy, 598 joules. We're looking for the temperature. Um, so the temperature is the goal. That's the thing that we need. The other thing is we're given the heat capacity. So the other version of this equation is replacing the S and the M with the heat capacity. So that is the other version of the equation. It's not exactly given, but you have the information and right next to each other, um, to solve for it. So this is essentially a three, um, three variable problem where you are given the Q, you're given the capital C and you're solving for temperature. Um, the question also gave us grams of methane. We don't actually need that. Um, you, this is because of the bomb calorimetry question. Um, there's no room for specific heat. So there's no way for us to actually deal with S and it didn't ask us to solve for that. Um, so that is basically just a red herring. You don't need that five grams. Um, I also was making this problem up on the spot and I was debating what I wanted to solve for. Um, now the other thing we do need to deal with is the fact that my Q is given in joules and my calorimeter is given in kilojoules. Um, so to deal with that, I will just go ahead and put my Q in kilojoules. So this is really going to be zero point five nine eight kilojoules. Um, and so then we're just going to have a zero point five nine eight is equal to the heat capacity, which is 29 um, times the change in temperature. This is not going to be very large. Which was the reason I was like, I don't know that I'm going to like this question. Zero point oh two, ew, Kelvin. Um, is my change in temperature? That is not very much. Um, I mean, that, that is what happened when I picked these numbers. But, but basically that's really probably not enough for your temperature to actually be noticed. So you probably need to put more than five grams in here, um, if that was a real, a real number. Because apparently five grams will not move the temperature up very much according to my made up numbers that are not real. Um, but that is how you would solve for this is basically you take the numbers out of the problem, deal with the fact that the calorimeter absorbed energy. So that is trying to tell you, um, that notion of energy and that's the value of Q. It's asking for the temperature that rose. So that's your temperature, your change in temperature. And the heat capacity, your units will help you with that. Um, that that is supposed to be the capital C. Um, so a reminder that C is the variable we use for heat capacity. Um, and that is in units of either joules or kilojoules. Um, but per unit temperature. So, so that can either be in joules per degree Celsius. That can be in joules per Kelvin. That can be in kilojoules per degree Celsius. That can be in kilojoules per unit Kelvin. Cause, cause the large capital C is for the whole object. The S is specific heat and that's the one that then is basically per material. So this is the one where then it's usually in joules per gram per degree Celsius or joules per gram per Kelvin. Um, something like that. So hopefully that helps with a bomb calorimeter. Um, But basically, the bomb calorimeter, you're going to use the Q equals the capital C, the heat capacity, times the change in temperature to solve, and there's usually just not as many numbers to deal with in those styles of problems. Okay. Other kind of question. The pellet is a classic. We'll do the pellet question. Metal pellets with a temperature of 98 degrees Celsius is placed into 10 degrees Celsius water. 75 grams of. Seven, yeah. If the final temperature of the water and the pellet is 13.8 degrees Celsius. Oh, I need a mass. Small, but not too small, 24.3 grams. I'm gonna make this bigger in just a minute. What is the specific heat? Although, okay. Yay, too big. Okay, a 24.3 gram metal pellet with a temperature of 98 degrees Celsius is placed into 75 grams of 10 degree Celsius water. What's the specific heat? So somebody was saying, hey, what if we don't have, it doesn't look like we have the specific heat of water, that potentially useful information? Do you actually do? It's just kind of hiding. It's in the definition of a calorie. That is the specific heat of water, because a calorie is the amount of energy required to raise one gram of water by one degree Celsius. So a calorie is the specific heat of water. 4.184 joules. So we do have the specific heat of water. 4.184 joules. So whenever we are doing this style of question, I, there's different ways to think through this. But what I usually like to do is organize the numbers that I've got and figure out what I'm actually looking for. So I have two things, right? I have water. And I have the metal. So I'm going to go through in this case and just underline everything in red for the metal. So this says a 24.3 gram metal pellet with a temperature of 98 degrees Celsius is placed into. The other stuff is for the water, 75 grams of 10 degrees water. I also grabbed in blue the specific heat of water. The final temperature belongs to both. And I'm looking for the specific heat of the metal. So that is my goal. So there are two main ways to do this style of problem. One of them is to solve for the heat that is absorbed by the water, and to use that value to then solve another equation. The other way is to put the two equations equal to each other and do more algebra. I'm going to do it the less algebra way, I think. So basically, when we're looking at this sort of a question, I need to come back to what are my equation options? So these are my equation options for chapter 10. There's not very many. Well, I guess there's also, there's one more in there, but it's one we can't use. I want specific heat, and specific heat's only in those. So, but I need the specific heat, and I don't have any information about heat capacity. So I need this, and I have information about temperature, I have information about mass. So this is going to be my equation. I have lots of information about the water, so I'm going to calculate Q of the water. So Q of the water is going to be equal to the specific heat of water, 4.184, that is in, oh, I didn't, sorry, per degree Celsius. Per gram per degree Celsius times the mass, which is 75, times the change in temperature, that's final minus initial. So change in temperature is always final minus initial. So in this case, the initial is 10, the final is 13.8. So I can go ahead and now calculate what my value for Q is. 24 times 75 times 8. So I get a value of Q to be 1,192.44. Does that sound right? 75 times four. Times three? Yeah, 75 like twelve times. That's reasonable. So this is my value for Q. It's in joules. Also, in case you wondered what mental math I just did, this number seemed kind of big to me, and so I double checked the fact that I had 75. This is four, and this is basically 3.8. So it really is more like 74 times like 16 anyway. Just to make sure that this number seemed to be a reasonable number. Because did I do this in advance? No, I did not. This is my value for Q, and this is my value for the water. Now, this next step is is kind of important. I can show you what happens if you mess it up. But basically, the idea here is, is that the water is absorbing all the heat, which is part of the reason why this is a positive number, which means the metal gives off the heat. So this is a game of catch, essentially, also known as the first law of thermodynamics. Energy can neither be created nor destroyed, just transferred. So whatever water was, whatever energy was absorbed by the water has to be the same energy that was given off by the metal. We do assume perfect conditions where no heat is lost to the universe. It's all being absorbed by the water. We're capturing all of that heat in the water. So this negative sign then is going to help us with our signs. So that means that my Q for the metal is negative 1,192.44 joules. I can then go ahead, since I have the metal now, and set it equal to the same equation. But now everything should be for the metal. So S, M, and my change in temperature. So that means it's negative 1,192.44. I'm looking for the specific heat. The mass of my metal is 24.3 grams, and then my change in temperature. My pellet starts off. Change in temperature is final minus initial. So the final is 13.8 minus 98. Which is negative 84.2. That's the other reason I need my negative sign to match. Because my change in temperature is negative and my specific heat has to be positive. Specific heats are only positive, just like mass. Mass has to be positive. There is, there is not. Don't have negative masses. So I'm going to divide by 24.3. I get 0.583 to be my specific heat, so 0.583. This, I lost all my units, joules per gram per degree Celsius. There you go. So it is a specific heat. So in this case, so I mentioned that I could talk about what happens if you mess up the sign. So in this case, because I'm looking for a specific heat, if I had messed up the sign, all that would have happened is my specific heat would have been negative, and then I could have been like, oh, whoops, specific heat has to be positive. My bad, I messed up somewhere. And backtrack. The thing with some of the other versions is it's nice to double check things like, in this problem, my metal pellet is hot at 98 degrees Celsius. It's going into relatively cool water at 10 degrees Celsius. And then the water gets warmer and the pellet gets colder. So what should be happening then is I should be able to talk about the water absorbing heat. So I should have that change in temperature be positive for the water. But the metal pellet is losing thermal energy, and therefore I should have a change in temperature that's negative. So those things in there, the, the math should conceptual, should match the conceptual idea of what's happening in there. And this is my preferred way, frankly, to go ahead and calculate the Q of the water, and then deal with transferring the Q of the water to the Q of the metal, and then doing it again. For me, this is easier to keep track of where I am and what I'm doing and what order things go in. So that is the last question I had out of the chat. So are there other questions out of the chat so far?
Yes. It says, how do we know when to use Celsius and K?
Anything else?
That is the only question so far.
Okay. Okay, so a couple of things with this. Is in gases. We're gonna always use K. And really, the other, the part of this really is, is that temperature is always Kelvin. Change in temperature is either degree Celsius or Kelvin. And let me show you what I mean by that. Should we do story time first? Story time first. So you have to imagine, and this is tough to imagine, I understand, in the year 2025. But the Celsius scale is invented by humans, right? This, the Celsius scale is not something that nature created necessarily, but the Celsius scale is for people, which is the reason why we also have the Fahrenheit scale, and the reason why we have the Kelvin scale, is because people were like, gosh, that's cold, or gosh, that's hot. And that's not enough information. So we needed temperature. We needed a way to talk about numerically how hot is hot and how cold is cold, and what do we really mean by that? So. In general, the Fahrenheit scale, I usually think of it, and I swear that was a meme first, but I've gotten all my history messed up at this point. Basically, the Fahrenheit scale is if it's hot or cold to humans. The Celsius scale is if it's hot or cold to water. So the Celsius scale is based on water. So zero degrees Celsius is the melting point of ice. And 100 degrees Celsius is boiling, is where water boils. So zero to 100 is where you have liquid water. That's it. At one atmospheric pressure, I should say. So when they made the Kelvin scale, they already, scientists in general, when they made the Kelvin scale in general, they've already been using Celsius for the most part. So when they made the Kelvin scale, what actually happened, and this ties back to gas laws actually beautifully, is they calculated based on gases where an ideal gas would basically have a volume of zero, what temperature. So they basically calculated where all matter would stop. And so they made the Kelvin scale by just sliding the Celsius scale down, and they were like, where, where is cold? Where is hot? And so they just made it, but they based Kelvin on Celsius. So Kelvin comes from Celsius. So what I mean by that is, if I want to talk about Kelvin, if I was talking about the temperature, the temperature of zero degrees Celsius is 273.15 Kelvin. If I'm using a gas law, where I have to stick in a temperature, I have to stick in Kelvin, because if I put zero into this, everything is zero, and I can't do any math. But, but if I'm doing the change in temperature, then my answer in blue for the change in temperature is just 100 minus zero, which is 100 Celsius for a change in temperature. And if I'm doing change in temperature for Kelvin, that's 373.15 minus 273.15, and that's also 100 Kelvin. So this is the weird thing, which is that a per degree, a per Kelvin, that change is actually identical in Kelvin and Celsius by design. Okay, this is, this is not like, it's weird, mostly because we, we just kind of use temperature instead of giving you the history of where it came from. But that's the thing. So this is similar to talking about things like age. Like I'm, I am 40 years old. A lot of y'all are somewhere between like 19 and, or like 18 to 20. And so we can talk about like that difference in age, and you can slide the scale and talk about the difference in age between like me and my parents, but that per year is the same, no matter what we're talking about. That was not the best analogy, but that's what I'm going to go with. So the, the per is the important part. So the change in temperature between Kelvin and Celsius is actually the same. But if you are just taking in a temperature, then it matters, and gases have to be in Kelvin. Gases are always in Kelvin. Always use Kelvin for gases. Always. Anything else in the chat so far?
Yes. First, a clarification for the previous question. It just says that in Alex, some questions needed conversions and others didn't. And then for the next question, it says, what equations use kj versus j? What questions are associated with each?
Okay, so as far as conversions go, so this is one of those games where nobody asked me about conversions, so I didn't talk about conversions. But, and I apologize, I didn't, I, I do think you guys already know milliliters to liters. I didn't mention that one. But anytime we're doing molarity, especially, molarity involves volume, because that's moles per liter, but there's lots of milliliters to liter conversions. Also, we can definitely do pressure conversions. So I know it's small. So. Looking at pressure conversions. You're given a bunch of pressure conversions on the potentially useful information sheet. So you guys should be able to go in between any of these. So I should be able to tell you that you have a pressure of 700 tor. And you should be able to say, well, I know from this that there's 670 tor in one atmosphere, and therefore you can calculate the correct pressure in atmosphere should you need to. So yes, you guys should be able to use the potentially useful information to do conversions for pressure. So you're right, I did forget to mention that in the giant list of bullet points. Because usually that stuff that for class, I usually just do by example and throw in as needed. Since the conversion units are given. And yeah, milliliters to liters, definitely do conversions for that. Absolutely. Oh, I think you're talking about Celsius and Kelvin. So this is where I think we're gonna have to agree to disagree because through this format, you can't send me a screenshot. But um, in office hours, if you've got screenshots of your Alex questions, you could have, if it's, as long as the temperature is in change in temperature, you did not have to convert it. You didn't have to. Now, I will say if it gave you two different temperatures, if it gave you some temperatures in Kelvin and some in Celsius, then then you need them to all be the same. But or or if it gave you temperatures in Kelvin and it asks you in the end to solve for Celsius. So I mean, there's ways to force you into doing one temperature or the other, but if it was a calorimetry problem and you just need a change in temperature, you didn't have to do the conversion. I believe you that Alex told you to do it that way. I hundred percent believe you. I'm not arguing that Alex would be like, let's do extra math. But if it's, if it's a calorimetry problem, as long as the units match, you can either be in Kelvin or Celsius. It doesn't matter. Gases have to be in Kelvin though. Gases are always in Kelvin. Change in temperature, change in temperature can be in either one. And if that's too difficult to remember, just always be in Kelvin. So if, if the fact that sometimes sometimes you can get away with it and sometimes you can't, if that's too complicated, then you just always be in Kelvin. Cause that'll, that'll be safe. Uh, but it really is. It's the the difference. Um, it's the per part that matters in there. But I I do, I would a hundred percent believe that Alex was like, let's convert. Because Alex, Alex always assumes you love math and on chemistry, but Alex always assumes that you love math. So the question was about kilojoules versus joules. So there are I want to give an honest answer. So I'm gonna give you a short answer that's honest. And then I'm gonna give you a longer answer that you might not like, but hopefully will help. So the short answer is kilojoules and joules are interchangeable. So on one hand, if you're like, when do we use one versus the other? The answer is when you're given one or when we tell you to. And and I know that that's an annoying answer, but that's my first answer because the exam is all multiple choice, so we're gonna give you units, all the answer choices will have units. So read the problem, pay attention to if it's in kilojoules or joules because we'll state it. We have to give you the information. And otherwise, this is a metric conversion to go in between them. Um, so we definitely assume that if we give you twelve kilojoules, that you can take the twelve kilojoules and say, well, there's one thousand kilojoules. No, there's not. I'm tired. That's up. There's one kilo jewel for in one thousand joules. So this is really twelve thousand joules. So there is an expectation that you can go in between those two as much as you need. So that's the short answer that I don't feel like really answered the question. Uh, but that that is the shortest answer, which is when we tell you to. The longer answer, because there are some things that are always in kilojoules. Um, so I I do, I do wanna be more honest in the fact that some things are always in kilojoules. Um, so some things that I think of as always in kilojoules, uh, always in kilojoules are usually things like infalp values. This is all of the infalp values. Um, so infalp of reaction, usually in kilojoules or sometimes in kilojoules per mole. Delta H of formation is in kilojoules. Kilojoules per mole, um, your bond infalps typically are in kilojoules per mole. So typically things that have to do directly with infalp always super usually in kilojoules. The ones that are harder. So this is more on the you usually side, dot, 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 question mark, question mark, question mark. In joules. A lot of times your calorimetry, but not always. Doctor Sutton calling me, Dr. Sutton, I love you. I'm doing an exam review. Why do you always call me during exam reviews? She's a friend of mine. So usually in joules calorimetry. So a lot of times we're calculating Q. You usually see joules and that is because usually specific heat is usually actually in joule per gram per degree Celsius. And so you usually, uh, you see calorimetry more done in joules. Now, the reason why it's got some question marks in some ellipses that all of that jazz is because I did a, one of the calorimetry problems had a heat capacity that was actually in kilojoules. So thi- this one is not as certain as that. So it's a, it's a valid question to be like, are there things that I can look for that would help me figure out what I'm doing? And it's definitely worth keeping an eye on the units. Uh, so definitely understand, because units will help a lot with which equations do you need and what's going on? And in general, infalps in kilojoules, calorimetry is hu- usually in joules. It doesn't have to be though. So hopefully that's helpful in that regard. So yeah, so the short, the short answer is follow, follow the units that we give you. Be careful, know how to convert in between kilojoules and joules, know how to convert in between milliliters and liters, and that'll help you out. On calorimetry, infalp calculations. I did not do a heating cooling curve and I did not do a titration question. Those are the two things that I need to do for the class that I didn't talk about. Um, so I'm gonna write those two things down because I did not do a heating curve, so I'm gonna put twelve point five. Um, and I think that might very well help y'all just to see how that one all comes together. And then the other question that I had gotten, but I didn't do one of is a titration. That would also be a good one to do for the um follow-up video. And is there anything else out of the chat for the follow-up video?
Nothing in the chat.
That sounds good. Well, it is nearly seven o'clock. Um, what I will do is I'll scroll little letter in on my screen. Um, so quick reminder, um, so exam four is this Saturday at ten AM. Um, all multiple choice, no short answer. Uh, we're aiming for thirty-two questions. We've not made final decisions yet, so that could change, but that's what we're kind of aiming for. Um, do make sure you have the final exam on your calendar. It's a week after the fourth exam. I am sorry about that. Um, but I didn't pick it um at one PM. So it's a different time. It's at one PM. Uh, but hey, if you're on campus at ten, you won't be late. So just make sure that that's on your calendar as you guys get everything underway. And this will be posted soon. Um, anything else before we sign off for the evening?
Uh, yes, uh, if you're in the prehealth LLC, there is an event happening around now. It's the brushes and bites event. You might have seen some flyers from from it. It's happening in the Andromeda NPR. So if you're, you know, needing to do something else other than study for the upcoming exam, that is also happening until late.
Very cool. All right. Well, good luck, y'all. Have a good night.